See if I had.
Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Cincilla? Alderman Hazel? Alderman Hazel?
Here.
Alderwoman Duco?
Here.
Alderman Pusa?
Hello? Here.
Thank you.
Alright, I just got in.
Can you please mute your phones? Alderman Randall?
Here. Hello?
Alderman Ferguson?
Here. Hello?
Hello, this is city council meeting, please mute your phones. Can please, everybody please mute their phones except the aldermen because we're getting a lot of feedback. Alderman Anthony?
Here.
Alderman Ovian?
Here.
Alderman Dillman?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer?
Here.
Alderwoman Steele?
Here.
Alderman Rothweiler?
Here.
Alderman Elmore?
Here.
Alderman Wygant?
Here.
Alderman Wiggington?
Here.
Alderman Barfield?
Here.
All aldermen are present, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart?
Here.
City Attorney Horner?
I think so.
Police Chief Bill Clay?
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Pore? Finance Director Jamie Matron?
Here.
Hey, they are calling us.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn?
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole?
Here.
Director of Wastewater Randy Smith?
Here.
Director of Residential Commercial Development Services Anissa McCaskill?
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearman?
Here.
Director of IT Scott Markovich? City Engineer Michael Veloff?
Here.
Human Resources Manager Emma Qualls?
Here.
Okay.
Just the fire chief.
Just the fire chief and he may stop in here shortly. Okay, at this time ladies and gentlemen, for those who are able, please stand up and let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm muted.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'm sure all of you by now have heard the sad news that our longtime good friend and fellow alderman Paul Seibert passed away on Sunday. Paul was a member of this city council since 1979 until the time that he accepted an appointment on the St. Clair County Board to fill his wife's term after Dixie passed away in 2017. Paul had 38 years on the city council, he chaired many committees. He was truly amazing with his dedication to his constituents in Ward 6. So at this time, there appears from the obituary that I read a while ago from Renters &amp; Son, it's a private family service and we've seen so much of this during the COVID time. And they do have a pretty good sized family alone, so I don't have any arrangements. But if you would all pause with me for a moment of silence for our longtime friend and colleague, Paul Seibert.
Muted. I'm muted.
Okay, thank you very much and I just ask that you keep the Seibert family in your thoughts and prayers. As we go on this evening, we have no public hearing, but I will open public participation in just a moment. Now, I know there's many cases on here tonight from zoning and there's a lot of items, this is a pretty hefty agenda. Probably the biggest one since we've had phone meetings. Much different than the zoning board, if someone wants to make a comment, they're gonna have to be patient and let me call on them and they gotta do it at the beginning of the meeting because once we start the meeting with the aldermen, there's no public participation, okay? So at this time, is there anyone this evening who would like to make a statement? And we'd like to keep these to two minutes, two to three minutes max, your comments. But is someone interested in making a comment this evening? The time is now. No one this evening?
Yes, I would like to make a comment if anyone would like to ask me any questions.
Well, what is your name, sir?
George Laxian.
Okay, George, I know you have an item on the agenda, it's 11C8. Does anybody, while George has a chance to answer, does anybody have a question for George about that case? It did pass unanimously from the zoning board. No one having a question? Yes?
Mayor Alderman Barfield, Alderman Barfield and I have no questions.
Okay, very good, thank you Alderman Wiggington. George, I think we're probably okay as far as their questions, okay?
Should I hang up now or do I stay on?
You can stay on and listen, okay, as we get to the vote. Just
Thank you very much.
Just please mute your phone if you can. Okay, anybody else for public participation? Anyone else? Yes?
This is Trent, this is Trent Overhue with C11.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to hop on here tonight and just answer any questions that any of the aldermen might have. And ladies, we're excited about this project and we'd like to get going on it as soon as possible, so we're hopeful for a positive vote tonight. If there's any comments or concerns, I'm here to answer anything that you guys might have.
Okay, sir, there could be a question that comes up at the time of this vote and since you are the petitioner for the project, they could ask you a question at that time, okay?
That'd be just fine.
Okay, alrighty, if there's no other questions, anything else from public participation this evening?
Yeah, this is Kenny Brown, I wanted to talk about the special use permits for the cannabis. Do I need to wait for it to come around?
No, this is your time right now, if you have something to state, this is the time to state it.
Yeah, I own a business right next to the land that they're looking at to put the cannabis farm. And you know, I worked with the city of Belleville to put that sign out there with Tenius and I don't know that we want a cannabis farm as we enter into the front door of the city of Belleville, or at least one of the doors, but having said that, I have a family owned business in this where they're trying to zone. And when the young lady presented her knowledge of what she was trying to do, it was all with the what ifs, we don't know if she has a place to sell it, we don't know what the numbers truly bring in, she was speculating on everything. I just don't need a cannabis farm coming into Belleville right next to my business and what it's gonna do to that surrounding area, especially around security. She didn't know what kind of security she was gonna have, she said she was gonna haul it in armored cars. I don't know that I need this by my business, especially with my taxes the way they are now. I can only imagine it's gonna raise them even higher. So, I don't think she has a solid plan, plus these people are from out of state, coming to our town to, you know, we're just letting out of staters, a group of pharmacists pull their money together and throw a marijuana farm right at the entrance of Belleville. And I just don't think this is the right thing for the city when we have all this kind of farm ground around us. Why would you wanna put it right at the door of coming into the town? So, you know, I just was totally shocked that all we look at is what the revenue brings in from the taxes when in fact what it's gonna do to the area, the economical impact. So, I hope you don't continue to go forward with
Okay, thank you, sir, thanks for your comments. Anybody else this evening with any comments for public participation? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation. We're gonna move forward to the next page is Presentations, Recognitions and Appointments. The first thing I wanna do under 7A is I wanna talk about the character word of the month. And the character word for the month of July is citizenship. Meaning doing your share to make your community better and being a good neighbor. And citizenship is one of those traits that we talk about all the time when we talk with various groups of young people, but it's very important to all of us groups of adults as well, citizenship. Now, if there's no one objecting, I've got several appointments as we do every year in May and June. And if no one's objecting, could I read these as a group?
Please, please read them as a group, thank you.
Anybody object? Okay, so the following 7B to 7F. I, Mayor Mark Eckert, I'm recommending Scott Langson to fill the vacancy of the Parks and Rec Board left by Dorothy Meyer to serve a five-year term. I also recommend Steve Zimmerman, he's been on the zoning board that served another five-year term on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm recommending that Jim Kurtz be reappointed to serve a one-year term on the Building Code of Appeals. I'm recommending as mayor to appoint Paul Baumann to serve a four-year term on the Building Code of Appeals. And I'm recommending Augie Werner serve a three-year term on the Building Court of Appeals. Do I hear a motion for those appointments?
So moved, Schaefer.
Schaefer made the motion, who was the second?
Cincilla.
Cincilla made the second, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve 7B, C, D, E and 7F, all appointments from the mayor. If there's no further question or comment, roll call.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you very much for those appointment approvals. At this time, we go to approval of the minutes, I'd like to ask a motion to approve the city council minutes from June 15, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, Wiggington.
Wiggington and second by Steele to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 15. If there's no additions or corrections by anyone, I'd call and ask for all in favor signify?
Everything's gotta be roll call.
Everything's gotta be roll call, that's right, that was the new chain. Okay, we have a roll call vote.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Oh, I did read that.
Hi.
Pusa? Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Motion carries, we go to claims, payroll and disbursements. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $1,395,148.62 and the payroll in the amount of $780,283.41. Do I hear a motion?
Dillman?
Dillman made the motion and Anthony was the second? We have a motion and a second to approve the claims, disbursements and payroll. Are there any additions or corrections to those items? Hearing none, roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries, we go to page three. Number 11A, Economic Development and Annexation, Alderman Wiggington. No, I'm sorry, Alderman Cincilla, I'm sorry. Alderman Cincilla, I caught myself.
On behalf of the Economic Development Annexation Committee, I make a motion to approve annexing certain territory located in Bell Valley Lane, parcel number 0836.0100-019.
Have a motion by Alderman Cincilla, do I hear a second?
Rothweiler.
Rothweiler made the second. We have a motion and a second to approve this annexation recommendation. Any discussion?
Can you give us mayor some background or backstory on this?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us some backstory on the purpose of this with the Elmore? I'm sorry, I didn't see this.
Okay, this is being recommended for annexation because they are wanting to annex seven acres that's adjacent to Bell Valley School to use for a solar farm to help them with a grant to get solar for their school. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, yep, we got it, I'll ask for a roll call.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to administration under 11B, 1 through 8. Now, we can do these individually if you'd like, that's not a problem. Or we can do them as a group coming from administration, but I do wanna explain, 11B, the bids, there's two separate companies there. Their bids came in identical, so they split the bid between the two firms, each at $70,095 each. So that's how that happened there, the two separate companies on the asphalt, sales and products, etc., so that's how that came that way. You wanna do them individually or what are your choices?
Mayor, all together, yes. And we could read them all together, but the first three are really streets and grades. From four on down are individual items. Would like them all read together, I have no problem.
We could read, we could read the first three together, is that acceptable? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so you wanna Yeah, we'll read the first three together then first.
11B1, motion to approve RCS Construction Incorporated in the amount of $106,951.50 for 2021 concrete patch MFT funds. 11B2, motion to approve Asphalt Sales and Products Incorporated in the amount of $70,095. And Chris Brothers Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $70,095 for the 2021 Group 2A and 2B general maintenance asphalt MFT funds. 11B3, motion to approve Bealman Logistics LLC in the amount of $23,203 for the 2021 Group 1A and Group 1B for the 2021 general maintenance aggregates MFT funds.
Do I hear a motion to approve those first three from administration? 11B1,
So moved Wiggington.
Who was the, Wiggington made the motion, who's the second?
Wygant.
Wygant made the second, we have a motion and second on 11B1, 11B2 and 11B3. Any discussion on those three items? Roll call.
On 11B3,
Yes, yes.
Wait a minute, 11B3, there's such a variation here that Bealman controlled that much swag that he could be that far under everybody else?
The answer is yes.
A $23,000 versus $140,000 versus this, that's a start.
Um, he Michael, do you wanna add anything? Jason, either one of you?
I'm sorry, man.
I can answer it, so Rafi, what you're looking at on the bid sheet, the other two did not bid on that group, that Group 1A and 1B, it was only bid by Bealman. That's why they were chosen, nobody else bid on that.
You hear that Alderman Ovian?
That answers my question.
Okay, we have a motion for 11B1, 2 and 3. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dillman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Those three motions carry, Jamie, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna explain 11B3 and 11B4 and we'll do those two together? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 11B4 and 11B5, my bifocal slipped. So you wanna explain what you and I talked about and why this is on here tonight?
Sure, so currently we have the opportunity to refund or refinance two separate bond issues. One from 2009 and one from 2011. The one from 2009 doesn't have a lot of time left on it, so the savings aren't great enough to make a refinancing of just that issue feasible. There is a big savings opportunity for the 2011 issue and if we do them together, we can reap savings on both issues. So the 2009 issue is mainly paid from sewer funds and also a small portion from the general fund. The 2011 issue is paid from the sewer funds. So there's a total estimated savings from this refinancing after all fees associated could be approximately $800,000 with the remaining term. Great, this is estimated though, as market rates fluctuate, nothing is guaranteed at this point. The current rate for the two bonds are over 4% for the 2009 issue and over 5% for the 2011 issue. The new rate could be as low as around 2.5%. Maturity date of the bonds would stay the same, they wouldn't be extended. So tonight I'm just asking the council to approve moving forward with this possible refunding and as part of that hiring Joy Howard as our municipal advisor and Gilmore and Bell as our bond counsel. We've used them both in the past and all have been very happy with their services. Their fees are listed in your packet, the fees were already taken into consideration when I just quoted that possible saving. Also note, if the rates fluctuate negatively and we end up not refinancing anymore and don't close, the fees will not be due, they're just contingent on closing. The only fee that isn't contingent is the rating fee that we have to pay the tenants and borrowers once they do the rating, and that's not a significant amount, it's just $100. So administration's recommendation to proceed with the hiring of both Joy and Gilmore and Bell to hopefully reap these big savings and get these strong refinances.
Does everybody understand Jamie? What's that?
Cincilla makes that motion.
Cincilla, was that Cincilla?
Yes.
Cincilla made a motion to approve 11B4 and 11B5. So we have a motion, do we hear a second? Wiggington made the second. We have a motion and a second to approve 11B4 and 11B5, any additional correct questions?
Mayor, Jamie?
Yeah, yeah Roger. Go ahead Roger.
Yeah, Jamie, how soon will those rates be locked in?
That's a good question, Joy? Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
You were broken, you were broken up there Jamie. Try it one more time.
This is Joy, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you Joy, go ahead.
It takes, for a bond sale, it generally takes about three months.
Okay, so until we can lock them in. Okay Roger? Yeah, so tonight's vote starts the process.
Right.
Okay? Okay?
For that, we, yes, I need, huh, good, the rates fluctuate wild, up and down the way the market's going. Three months, if it takes that long.
We're gonna go as quick-
What do we be looking at?
This is Joy again. Um, apart from the, the normal process taking three months, there's also a legal limitation that, that will force us to wait that long. And yes, it is possible that rates would go up, but if rates go up, ideally, we would be able to wait till the market improves again.
Okay? Alrighty, good questions, thanks, Joy. Okay, we have a motion and we- Yes?
Bear?
Yes?
Aldrin Randall. Could we please read the motions into the record?
Okay.
I think Jamie talked about them, but I don't think they'll be-
Okay, okay, you're, you're right, we will go ahead and read, you're right, you're right, you're right. There's been, the, it's been so hard to hear breaking up on my phone, go ahead, we will read them.
Eleven B four, motion to enter in a, into a municipal advisor agreement with Joy A. Howard, DBA WM Financial Strategies for Services relating to the issuance of refunding bun, bu- bonds? Sorry. Eleven B five, motion to enter into an agreement with Gilmore and Bell in connection with the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds.
So we have a motion and a second for eleven four, eleven B four, eleven B five. Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa? Randall?
Hi.
Motion carries. We go now, we go now to, uh, the next one, I'd, I'd ask for a motion to enter into an independent contractor agreement between the City of Belleville and E. Royce Carlisle, effective July seventh, two thousand twenty, through August thirty of two thousand twenty-two. It, the purpose of this would be that Royce is willing to be a backup to the chemist in the lab, um, in, in wastewater, and we have to have samples every day for EPA. And one of our main ones are, uh, if she would be the lady who's the chemist in this, and if she would be out, Royce would be eligible to do that, so that's what this is. Do I hear a motion?
Dittelman?
Dittelman made the motion, do I hear a second?
Duco?
Duco made the second. We had a motion by Dittelman, mo- second by, uh, by Duco to approve an independent contractor agreement with the City of Belleville and Royce Carlisle. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Motion carries, we go on to eleven B seven. I'd ask for a motion to approve a contract with St. Clair County Trustee Payment Account to purchase the property at three twenty-six North First Street. Parcel number zero eight dash two one point zero dash four one nine dash zero zero one in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. This is a property that we have on the demolition list, and as explained before by our city attorney, it will save us money in the long run if we, uh, don't have to do all the, you know, advertising and all the different things that is acquired of us through the normal route of demolition. So I would ask for a motion to, this, this property has been a derelict property for probably the last ten years at least. So do I hear a motion?
Schaefer?
Wygant.
Duco?
Schaefer and Duco, we have a motion and a second to, uh, purchase this property at three twenty-six North First Street. Um, if there's no further questions, I call for a roll call vote.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla? Cincil- Thank you. Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Thanks.
Motion carries, last one under this section. Eleven B eight, I'd ask for a motion to approve a highway authority agreement for the property located at twenty oh four South Belt West. This is a typical agreement we've been using for, uh, the, um, Illinois EPA, this helps us, helps the business. Do I hear a motion to somebody to approve that?
Wygant.
Wygant, and who is the second? Schaefer. We have a motion and a second, uh. Any questions? Roll call.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele? Steele? Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Motion carries, we go to page four, and we, uh, we go to, uh, motions from the zoning board of appeals recommendations. Uh, can we, can we do eleven C one and eleven C two together?
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead, Ms., Ms., Ms. Clerk will read them together, the first two.
Twelve, March twenty, Sunvest Solar Incorporated, a request for a special use permit to establish a solar farm energy system, S F E S, on a forty point two five acre D one light industry, district zone parcel on East State Route fifteen, parcel number zero eight three five zero four zero 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 one one. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point three zero eight, one six two point four three zero through one six two point four three three, and one six two point five one five. Ward six, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Eleven C two, thirteen March twenty, Sunvest Solar Incorporated, a request for an area bulk variance to permit a fence one foot in height above the allowed maximum of six feet on a forty point two five acre D one light industry district zone parcel on East State Route fifteen, parcel number zero eight three five zero four zero 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 one one. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point three nine two and one six two point five seven zero, Ward six, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a consideration to approve eleven C one and eleven C two?
Rothweiler moved.
Rothweiler, who, who, Steele was the second? Rothweiler and Steele, first and second in it. Do I have any questions on this item? We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield? 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 Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? 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 De- Dittelman?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Ovian? Can, can you please mute your phones if, if, um, you're not responding to the roll call vote? There's a lot of background noise.
More than ever.
It's Ovian.
Oh, Ovian, okay.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
All right.
Motion passed.
The motion passed for eleven C one and eleven C two. We go on now to eleven C three and four, I'm gonna ask the clerk to read those two as a group.
Eleven C three, fourteen March twenty, Venue on Main, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license for Venue on Main, an event space, parcel number zero eight two one zero four four two zero one three. Can you please mute your phones? Located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward two, zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only. Eleven C four, fifteen March twenty, Venue on Main, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining for Venue on Main, an event space, parcel number zero eight two one zero four four two zero one three, located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five. Ward five, oh, Ward five, zoning board unanimously recommended approval. Though, they're both for Ward five, that was incorrect.
So do I hear a motion for eleven, uh, eleven C three and eleven C four?
Schaefer.
Schaefer and who is the second? Dittelman? Oh, Wygant?
Wygant.
Wygant was the second, we have a motion and a second for eleven C three, Venue on Main, and eleven C four, Venue on Main. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler? Rothweiler? Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Rothweiler? Rothweiler?
Hi.
Motion carries. I go to eleven C five and eleven C six, and I ask the clerk to please read those two. You want me to read them?
Sixteen March twenty, Magdalena Gilpin, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license for a wine bar at three ten East Washington Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three four zig six zero one two, located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward six, zoning board unanimously recommended approval in the name of the applicant only. Eleven C six, seventeen March twenty, Magdalena Gilpin, a request for a sign installation permit for area of special control to install signage for a wine bar at three ten East Washington Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three four six zero one two, located in a C two heavy commercial district. Applic- applic- applicable sections of the zoning code one five five point zero five two and one five five point zero five three, Ward six, zoning board unanimously recommended approval.
Okay, I'd ask for-
Ferguson made the motion.
I'd ask for a motion to approve eleven C five and eleven C six. Do I hear a motion?
Rothweiler moved.
I'm sorry, I was kind of muffled.
Rothweiler moved.
Rothweiler moved, who's the second?
Steele.
Steele made the second, came from Ward six. Motion by Rothweiler, second by Steele to approve those two, eleven C five and six. Any dis- any discussion? Roll call.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Cincilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pousa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Motion carries, you want to read? Okay, the next one is eleven C seven, it's a single, uh, item, um, Jay Mezzo?
Yep, eighteen March twentieth, James K. Mezzo, a request for an area bulk variance to establish a mobile home less than ten feet from the side lot line at twelve North Thirteen Street, parcel zero eight two one zero three two six zero zero six, located in a B one multi-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code one six two point one eight one and one six two point five seven zero, Ward two, zoning board unanimously recommended approval with the stipulation the mobile home be placed no less than four feet from the side property line.
Do we have a motion for that, uh, recommendation, eleven C seven?
Duco?
Duco made the motion, do I hear a second? Is there a second?
Pousa.
Pousa, so we have a motion and a second to approve this recommendation. Uh, it was approval with stipulation, it was unanimous, uh, coming from the zoning board, eleven C seven. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, any other comments?
Yes, Wygant.
Yes.
This mobile home, is this a new mobile home going in there?
I, um-
This, this is Anissa, um, yes, sir, there's, well, with a caveat, there's an existing mobile home that was actually there prior to zoning being established for the property, which is why we have the discrepancy with the setback. So what the owner of the property is seeking to do is to purchase and replace his existing home with a new mobile home. And what we figured out through the zoning board is that essentially it would be in the same location, which is why you see the stipulation setback. So the code allows, the, the code does allow for replacement of an existing mobile home with a newer mobile home, as long as it's done within a 12-month period. The issue was the setback, but as I said, the existing home was there present, the existing home was there prior to the creation of that zoning setback.
Oh, 'cause I thought, I thought that once a mobile home is gone or removed, it can't be replaced.
That's only if it's been over a 12-month period. So in this particular instance, if he had, i- it, in this particular instance, the home is still sitting on the property. He is not going to remove it until this is approved, and then he will replace it. But the code does allow for the mobile home to be replaced as a nonconformity within a certain period of time, and it implicitly states "mobile home."
Okay, another question, is there any other homes around there?
Yeah.
There, there are, there are existing homes, they were notified, and no one had an objection to, no one stated an objection to the, um, to the, to the, to the applicant's request. He's been there as the original owner for over 40 years.
Yep.
So he knows his neighbors, and no one had an objection.
And I have one question, I followed in Wygon's sound.
Okay.
Go ahead, Bill. Go ahead, Bill.
My, my question, uh, is, is there a stipulation that this be only owner occupied?
We did not do that stipulation, as the owner of the property, um, stated that he would be in the residence that was specifically asked, whether it was a rental or whether it was owned, owned by the owner and occupied the owner, he stated that it was. So that stipulation was not placed, as he is the applicant, and he is the current resident of the existing trailer.
And so some legal advice-
And, and, and also that, yeah, and that, that might be something to ask us of the attorney, because I don't know if we can place that type of stipulation. So I defer to the-
Many of, many of these, many of these, it's in the name of the applicant only, and I didn't know if that applies here. I think it's wrong, if, if none of the neighbors objected, and this person was already there, I understand that. But if, if, if he decides to move and turn into rental property, the neighbors may not be that wild about it.
Yes, sir, I, I, I'm not sure, what I can say is, this was a, um, variance, a bulk variance, dealing with setbacks, it was not a use variance, and typically that is the means by which we say in the name of the applicant only, is we're dealing with measurement in this situation, not the use. The use is already established for the property, therefore we have no way to provide a stipulation for the use, but we are providing leniency regarding the measurement. So that's the difference between the, the situations where we typically do something in the name of the applicant only, those typically are in terms of use, not measurement, and we are dealing with measurement in this situation, not the use.
This is Alderwoman Duco?
No issue, I have no issue with the measurement, I was just wondering if, uh, Garrett maybe has something by some subject. What Anissa says is correct, uh, because this is a variance, uh, it's not a special use permit, so we usually don't put those stipulations on there. But what's considered is whether or not you're going to allow us to continue with this, uh, variance from the, uh, setback requirement.
Very good. Armin Duco, did you still have something to say?
When I spoke to Mr. Mezzo, he told me he will be living in that property, that he's already lived in, he just wanted to make it bigger and nicer.
Sounds good, thank you, uh, Carmen. Okay, do we have any other questions or comments pertaining to 11C7? Hearing none, we have a motion and we have a second.
Yep.
And I would call for a roll call.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
No.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
No.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa? Randall?
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no? I apologize.
I did say no.
Okay, thank you. Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
No.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
No.
Wygon?
11 to 5.
11 to 5, the ayes have it. We go on to 11C8. Yeah, want me to read it?
No, I got it.
Go ahead.
11C8, 19 March 20th, George Latzkin. A request to rezone the property at 7316 West Main Street, parcel 07010308008. From C1 light commercial district to C2 heavy commercial district, and to allow the new C2 district to maintain an area below 10 acres. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.020, 162.230 through 162.233, 162.245 through 162.248, and 162.590, Ward 8. Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve Wigginton.
Motion to approve Wigginton.
Barfield second.
Barfield second, we have a motion, we have a second for 11C8. Are there any other questions for 11C8? Hearing none, roll call.
Wygon?
Aye. Yeah.
Wigginton?
Yes. Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa? Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Motion carries, we go to 11C9.
23 March 20th, Lattice Hayden. A request for a special use permit to operate a bed and breakfast Airbnb at 41 South 86th Street, parcel number 07020203012. Located in an A1 single-family residence district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.094 and 162.515, Ward 8. Zoning Board recommended approval by a majority of vote of 5 to 1.
Wigginton, Wigginton makes a motion to deny.
A motion to deny by Wigginton, do I hear a second on a denial?
Barfield second.
Steele, second.
Barfield second, a motion to deny. So we have a motion and a second to deny, are there any questions or comments about this 11C9?
Mayor, Mayor, if you'd be so kind, uh, Alderman Barfield and I went out and looked at this, this is incredibly narrow street. There's only parking on one side of the street, which is across from this residence. At the dead end, very tight, any type of a, um, emergency vehicle would try to get down this street, it would be very difficult. The applicant said that, well, and the, the driveways are very narrow and very steep, so depending, depending how many people are staying there, not everybody's going to be able to park in that driveway, they're going to have to park on the street. She said that she could possibly widen it, the way it's configured is very difficult to widen. Uh, also, there's, uh, pretty much the only entrance and exit is through the front door. She was not sure if she was going to lease out two or three rooms. And then, in her job requir- requirements, I would think there could be a possibility that she might not, she said she's going to live there, but she might not be there all the time. And, and I think in the middle of a residential block, with this tight squeeze, it would be a real concern for the neighbors, for parking, for an emergency vehicles, and so that's why I made a motion to deny.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny, we have a second. If there's no further comments, we can call for a, a roll call. Roll call.
Wigginton?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
No.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa? Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 15 to 1. To deny. So that's, that's the answer on that one. We go now to, uh, page 6, 11C10.
24 June 20th, Golden Orchard LLC. A request for a special use permit to establish a planned unit development, PUD, zoning overlay, in an A1H single-family residence zone district for Orchard Lakes Phase 2 subdivision. Lot numbers 56 through 58, 61 through 66, 68 through 77, 79 through 88, 90 through 94, 98 through 100, 102 through 104, and 106 through 119. Said PUD requests to increase the allowed maximum percentage of lot building coverage from 30% to 35%. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.124, 162.050 through 162.057, and 162.515. Ward 6, Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Steele?
Steele makes a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Rothweiler second.
Rothweiler second. Is there any discussion on, on 11C10?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Wygon?
Yes.
Okay, can you give me a little details on this, uh, is this out by the orchards?
This is Orchard Lakes, it's in the front part of the orchards, and they've, um, they, they, we recommended to them, actually, Anissa and staff, uh, we recommended that they would, uh, redo the PUD, because they found in, in, uh, when they were selling these lots, that the average home that they wanted to do on there, uh, was having some difficulty with what they originally approved fitting. So this seems to be the best result, is to get it, uh, to get the PUD adjusted, so that they can, uh, continue to move forward and sell those lots and build some homes.
That is correct, and actually about, um, two or three months ago, they came forward and they did the same thing for Phase 1. When they submitted that application, they actually intended to include this parcel of land, which is Phase 2, in that request. However, due to the way that they did their paperwork, it was neglected. So this is basically cleaning up what has already been approved with Phase 1, to allow for the same type of lot width and, um, setback. Um, just for clarification, the zoning for this property already allows for this type of setback, but the plat did not, so this would allow them to adjust their plat to reflect what the zoning code would require for that particular zoning district.
Okay, very good, so everybody understand the explanation of the, uh, 11C10 that Anissa just gave. If there's no other questions, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on, uh, 11C10.
Barfield?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygon?
Aye.
Wigginton?
Aye.
11C10 approved. We go to 11C11.
25 June 20th, Trent Oderhue. A request for a special use permit to operate a storage facility at 4201 North Belt West, parcel number 08080316045, 0800316050, and 08080316052. Located in a C2 heavy commercial district. Applicable sections of the zoning code 162.248 and 162.515, Ward 4. Zoning Board recommended approval by a majority vote of 4 to 2.
Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, 11C11?
Ovian, apparently made the motion to approve.
Ovian and, uh, Anthony made the motion in a second? Okay, Ward 4 Ovian and Ward 4 Anthony made the motion in a second. Any questions at this time about this? Roll call.
Consilla?
Aye.
Hazel?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson? Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Steele?
Aye.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wygon?
No.
Wigginton?
No.
Barfield?
No.
Okay, before I cast my vote, I got a question, if I may, for Anissa. Anissa, this, this, uh, property's been empty for some time, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've, I've, uh, I talked to several of you, and I will make the deciding vote, and I would love, like several of you said to me, you want us to have sales tax, but during a time when, um, we are seeing more and more companies file Chapter 11, and we did inquire about several possibilities there, including other grocery stores, and including even a food, uh, storage center, but all of them were not interested in the, in, the, the inquiries that I personally made or the administration made. So with that in mind, I'd rather see it occupied, and the grass cut, and lights on, and no trash dumped in the back, and I'd rather see some activity there than nothing, as much as it's not the perfect desired, uh, use. I think we saw that out of Walmart, though, that sat empty for seven, eight years, and now we got a pretty- That's set empty for seven, eight years, and now we got a pretty nice facility out there. So I'm gonna go ahead and cast a vote of approval. I vote aye. And the motion then would carry. We go on, the, the next two, eleven C twelve and thirteen, I'm asking for a motion to table. The, the, uh, lady on the, uh, the use application is ill this evening. And she sent an email, and she could not be on the call. So if we could ask to table it to the next city council meeting. Do I hear a motion to table until then?
Don't move, Wiggington.
Wiggington, who is, who is the second, Schaefer?
No.
And that's for eleven?
I just don't want them to call my name, and I'm not online, which I shouldn't have anything.
Hey, Randy?
I got calls in roll call, you know.
Randy?
Randy, your, your mute came off.
Okay, if you can, let, eleven, eleven C twelve and eleven C thirteen are being tabled to the next city council meeting. We have a motion and a second. You ready? Roll call.
Hazel? Hazel?
Hi.
Duco? Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Motion carried. We go to page seven, communications. The Greater Grace Ministry Tent Revival.
Uh, Greater, or twelve A, Greater Grace Ministry Tent Revival. Request from Greater Grace Ministry to hold a tent revival at two-twenty-six Centerville Avenue, Wednesday, July twenty-second, Thursday, July twenty-third, Friday, July twenty-fourth, and Sunday, July twenty-six, twenty-twenty, seven PM to nine-thirty PM. Additional request of traffic cones.
And they understand, just so you know, one, one of you called, they understand the, the group has to be less than fifty, they said it would be no greater than thirty. They understand social distancing, and Jenny went over all the rules and, and requirements. Um, so does someone willing to make a motion, uh, for this, uh, approval?
Schaefer?
Schaefer make the motion. Do I hear, Dittelman made the second, we have a motion, we have a second. Are there any further discussion?
Mayor, is this a group, Wygon?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Um, what happens if they don't buy, provide by the guidelines? Does somebody want to monitor them?
Well, we will contact the health department if they're not monitoring them. And, uh, you know, they have to monitor them. And, and really and truthfully, based on the state's guidelines, there's, we really don't have, we have to allow it, really, uh, it's, it's just, it's their right. Now, if, if they don't follow it, then we'll have to call the, uh, we'll have to call the health department or, uh, other possible authorities that might, uh, hold them, hold them to their requirements.
Okay, that's all I'm worried about, you know, so they go by their guidelines.
Yep, that's what we do too, but I think it'll be fine. So we have a-
Mayor, this is Wiggington.
Yeah, yes.
Is this a group that normally, is this a group that normally held their, uh, revival over by Skyview?
No, 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 this is a different group. This is a very small church, they have a very small congregation, and they, uh, Jenny talked with them very thoroughly, and I don't think we're gonna have any problems.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Motion carries. We have no petitions, we have one resolution, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-three eighty-eight. I'd ask-
Hazel, don't move, Anthony.
So Hazel made the motion and Anthony seconded it for, to read by title only, resolution thirty-three eighty-eight, all right? Roll call. God, nothing easy. Roll call.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
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 Resolution thirty-three eighty-eight, resolution authorizing the city of Bellevue, Illinois to proceed with the offering for sale of general obligation refunding bonds.
Do I hear a motion to approve resolution thir- Schaefer made the motion, do I hear a second? Do I hear, who is the second?
Duco?
Duco, we'll take that. Schaefer and Duco made the motion in second to approve resolution thirty-three eighty-eight. If there's no further questions, roll call.
Randall?
Hi.
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Hi.
Pusa?
Motion carries. Uh, if the council will bear with me, I'd like, I'd like to ask for a motion to read by title only, this first group of ordinances. Eighty-eight, eight-forty-one, eighty-eight, forty-two, eighty-eight, forty-three, eighty-eight, forty-four, eighty-eight, forty-five, eighty-eight, forty-six, eighty-eight, forty-seven, eighty-eight, forty-eight, and eighty-eight, forty-nine.
Not eighty-eight, forty-eight, that's the mobile home, or isn't it, no?
No, that's, that's okay, I'll pass, they all pass. So through, through eighty-eight, forty-nine, I'd like to read them by title only and as a group if possible.
The mobile home, it passed, but it, there were few that voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, the mobile home, I'm sorry, there wasn't, it wasn't unanimous. Let me go back and let me, let me rephrase that. I'd like to, I'd like to read them as a group, um, through eighty-eight, forty-eight. Is that acceptable by this, by this group?
Yes.
So we'll read them, read them by title only and as a group through eighty-eight, forty-eight. Roll call on that vote. Who made the motion? I'm sorry, it's been a long evening.
I think Wiggington made the motion and Schaefer seconded it, I didn't hear a name.
Is that right? Wiggington made the motion and Schaefer seconded?
Yep.
Okay, we're, we're reading now, we're reading now from, uh, title only and through the, as a group, eighty-eight, forty-one to eighty-eight, forty-eight.
He didn't mean eighty-eight, forty-seven, and not include eighty-eight, forty-eight, that was not unanimous.
Yeah, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry, that's correct. Eighty-eight, forty-seven through eighty-eight, forty-seven, that is correct.
Thank you.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
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 Wiggington?
Hi.
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
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 Randall?
Hi.
Fifteen A, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-one, twenty-twenty, the ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method within certain areas in the city of Bellevue. Fifteen B, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-two, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to twelve March twentieth, Sunvest Solar Incorporated. Fifteen C, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-three, twenty-twenty, and zoning ordinance in regards to thirteen March twentieth, Sunvest Solar Incorporated. Fifteen D, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-one, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to fourteen March twentieth, Venue on Main. Fifteen E, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-five, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to fifteen March twentieth, Venue on Main. Fifteen F, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-six, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to sixteen March twentieth, Magdalena Gilpin. Fifteen G, ordinance eighty-eight, forty-seven, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to seventeen March twentieth, Magdalena Gilpin.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve ordinance eighty-eight, forty-one, eighty-eight, forty-two, eighty-eight, forty-three, eighty-eight, forty-four, eighty-eight, forty-five, eighty-eight, forty-six, and eighty-eight, forty-seven. Do I hear a motion?
Ferguson.
Ferguson made the motion, who was the second? Who, Duco was the second, to read, to approve those ordinances just read. Are there any questions about those ordinances? Hearing none, I'm calling for a roll call vote.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
I think Wiggington, hi, yeah.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
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 Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Fifteen A through fifteen G approved. We go now to, uh, ordinance number, uh, eighty-eight, forty-eight. Do I hear a motion to approve ar- ordinance eighty-eight, forty-eight? I'm sorry, first of all, first of all, motion is to read by title only. Uh, do I hear a motion to read by title only?
Duco, Schaefer.
Duco and Schaefer. If there's no questions about reading by title only, I'd ask the clerk, I'd ask for a roll call vote on this motion.
Can we go ahead and just approve all of these real quick by title only? The, these last four? H-I-K-N-L, so we don't have to-
We still gotta come back and do this one down here. I was gonna, I was gonna group that.
Yeah, H-I-K-L-N-O, I mean, just get them approved to read by title only.
So is everybody, okay, so, uh, Schaefer and, uh, Duco, can we go ahead and, and read by title only, even though we'll vote individually? Uh, also, uh, approve reading by title only, eighty-eight, forty-nine? Um, still gotta read eighty-eight, fifty. No, we don't have to, it's denied. So eighty-eight, fifty-one, eighty-eight, fifty-two, and eighty-eight, fifty-five. That's included in your motion, I heard you say? Yes and yes? Okay.
Schaefer, yeah.
And the roll, the roll call vote is just on that, so I call for a roll call vote to read those by title only.
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygon?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
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 Hazel?
Hi.
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 Randall?
Hi.
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Those motions carried. At this time now, we're gonna go back to, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion pertaining only to ordinance number eighty-eight, forty-eight.
Ordinance eighty-eight, forty-eight, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to eighteen March twentieth, James K. Mezzo.
Duco?
Duco's making the motion to approve, and, and, and Pusa seconded?
Consilla.
Consilla seconded, okay. We have Duco and Consilla making the motion for eighty-eight, forty-eight. Any discussion on eighty-eight, forty-eight? Hearing none, I'm gonna, what's that? Background noise, roll call.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wygon?
No.
Wiggington?
Hi.
No.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
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 Ferguson?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Ten, ten to six?
Ten to six. Motion carry, ten to six. Okay, we go on now to ordinance, uh, ordinance number eighty-eight, forty-nine. Do I hear a motion? Well, let's read it.
Don't move, don't move, Wiggington.
Did you read it by title only? Did you read it by title only?
No, I haven't read it.
Okay, read this by title only first. I'm sorry, we have a motion to do that. Go ahead.
Ordinance eighty-eight forty-nine, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to nineteen March twentieth, George Lotzkeen.
Now do I hear a motion to approve?
Don't move, Wiggington.
Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Don't move, Wiggington.
Do I hear a second?
Barfield.
Barfield's second. So, we have a second and a motion on eighty-eight forty-nine. Um, questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Schaefer? Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant? Wygant? Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Wygant? Wygant?
Hi.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We go now to, uh, eighty-eight fifty. Would you please read that one?
No, that one's tabled.
That was tabled, I'm sorry. Or that's denied, it'll have to come back under denial. Uh, eighty-eight fifty-one. Would you read that?
Yep. An ordinance, or, ordinance eighty-eight fifty-one, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to twenty-four June twentieth, Golden Orchard LLC.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Rothweiler moves.
Motion by Rothweiler.
Second, Schaefer.
Dittelman was the second, I think was first, Dittelman. So we have a motion by Rothweiler, second by Dittel- And this is for ordinance number eighty-eight fifty-one. Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, this is the worst we've had for us not muting your phones. Um, if there's no further questions on eighty-eight fifty-one, could we, I'll call for a roll call.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Motion carries. I'd ask now for the clerk to please read eighty-eight fifty-two.
Ordinance eighty-eight fifty-two, twenty-twenty, a zoning ordinance in regards to twenty-five June twentieth, Trent Overhue.
Do I hear a motion to approve eighty-eight fifty-two?
Don't move. Steele?
Steele made the motion. Do I hear a second to approve eighty-eight fifty-two?
Anthony.
Anthony, Anthony. We have a motion and we have a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a roll call.
Rothweiler?
No.
Elmore?
No.
Wygant?
No.
Wiggington?
No.
Barfield?
No.
Consilla?
Yeah?
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Steele? Steele?
Hi. Yes.
Eight to eight once again, and the chair votes aye. Motion carries. We go now, uh, we've, do I hear a motion?
We just need to read eighty, the next one.
Do we, do I need to table these? We, we need to ask for a motion to ta- table ordinance eighty-eight fifty-three and eighty-eight fifty-four.
Don't move, Wiggington.
Wiggington and Schaefer made the second to table eighty-eight fifty-three and fifty-four. We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I'd ask the clerk to read the final ordinance of the evening, eighty-eight fifty-five.
Ordinance eighty-eight fifty-five, twenty-twenty, an ordinance annexing certain territory owned by Bell Valley School District to the city of Belvo, Illinois.
Do I hear a motion? Ward six.
Rothweiler moves.
Rothweiler and second?
Steele?
Steele, we have a motion and a second for coming from the ward six alderman to approve, uh, eighty-eight fifty-five. Any further discussions on that? Roll call.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Motion carries. Unfinished business. I don't have any, anybody if not. Miscellaneous and new business. I'd, I'd ask for a motion to approve the motor fuel claims for one thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Dittelman submitted.
Dittelman made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Elmore.
Elmore made the second. We have a motion and a second to approve motor fuel claims. If there's no further questions, roll call on that.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Motion carries. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose to discuss appointment, employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees under five ILCS one twenty slash two C one, collective negotiation matters, five ILCS one twenty slash two C two, and pending or threatened litigation, five ILSCS one twenty slash two C eleven. Do I hear a motion to go into executive sessions for those stated reasons?
Elmore.
Elmore, who's the second?
Schaefer.
Schaefer's the second. Any discussion on the, just as read and their, and the questions of executive session? Hearing none, roll call.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if you will hang up and call back in in just a moment on the executive session. Uh, uh, city, uh, employees, uh, department heads, there's several of you who were asked to call back in. You know who you are pertaining to, uh, some of this conversation that we have pending. And, uh, to everybody else, thank you. We will be returning to the, uh, call, to the general open council meeting, uh, for some possible action when we get done with executive session. So, thank you very much.
Muted.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna start the roll call, see how quick you got back on this line. So I will ask the city clerk to, uh, start seeing who's back on.
Consilla?
Here.
Hazel?
Here.
Duco?
Here.
Pusa?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Anthony?
Here.
Ovian?
Here.
Dittelman?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Steele?
Here.
Rothweiler?
Here.
Elmore?
Here.
Wygant?
Here.
Wiggington?
Here.
Barfield?
Here.
Very good. Everyone's back on. Mr. Harner, you back on?
I am.
Okay. We are back in open session for whoever else decided to join us. We have, uh, under eighteen B, I'm asking for a motion to recall Scott Ballcamp and Brandon Miller. Scott Ballcamp is from Parks, and Brandon Miller is from, uh, Public Works. They were both unpaid furlough status effective, uh, July seventh. Uh, we would like to bring them back effective tomorrow on July seventh. They've been off for the last four to six weeks, whatever that's been. So do I hear a motion to bring those two individuals back?
Ferguson.
Schaefer and Ferguson made the motion to bring back those two individuals so we can get Jason Poole some help for some additional, um, programming. So if there, is there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa? Pusa?
Hi.
Oh, I heard it. Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian? Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler? Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to ask if someone's willing to make a motion to hire a telecommunicator to replace, to replace a, a recent vacancy. Do I hear that motion?
Ferguson.
Ferguson made the motion. Who was the second?
Schaefer.
Schaefer was the second. Um, do we have any discussion on this? This is pretty straightforward. We're down one and the overtime's racking up. So if there's no further questions, roll call.
Hazel?
Hi.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield?
Hi.
Consilla?
Hi.
Motion carries, there's nothing else, I don't know.
Adjournment.
Oh, ask for a motion to adjourn.
But I gotta do roll call.
Don't move.
Schaefer.
Don't, who, who? Duco and Schaefer, we gotta have a roll call.
Duco?
Hi.
Pusa?
Hi.
Randall?
Hi.
Ferguson?
Hi.
Anthony? Anthony? Anthony?
Hung up.
Ovian?
Hi.
Dittelman?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Steele?
Hi.
Rothweiler?
Hi.
Elmore?
Hi.
Wygant?
Hi.
Wiggington?
Hi.
Barfield? Barfield? Consilla?
Hi.
Hazel?
Hi.
Anthony? Or Barfield?
Okay, just before I hit the gamble to adjourn the meeting, just wanna let you know, we got word this afternoon about three thirty-five that the, uh, Labor Day Parade is canceled. According to, uh, Scott Lectafell from the Central Labor Council, uh, the parade and a picnic will be canceled this year. So with that statement, I adjourn the meeting, thank you. Thank you, everyone.